It's a long night in that chair.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, December 8, 2014 Board of Education meeting. Please stand if you would and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. With the Board's permission, I'd like to try to move around some of the items on the agenda. We do have a very large group of children here from our elementary schools, Guilford Lakes specifically, and out of deference, trying to get them home early to be able to get on the school bus tomorrow morning. And with the Board's permission, I'd like to move up to this point on the agenda, item 8.1, which is under Dr. Freeman's report. And then also with the Board's permission, if we could move, I will move into 8.4, which is a discussion on high school start or school start times more generally, and then we can go back when we'll pick up the agenda then in order unless there's something else that seems like we ought to change that. So, Dr. Freeman, if you will, I'd like to ask you to introduce item 8.1.
Thank you, I'm happy to do that. Last year, a number of students from the Guilford Lakes Green Team came to this Board of Education and shared with us a presentation about Styrofoam. They talked to us about the production of Styrofoam, they talked to us about how long Styrofoam remains in the waste stream once it's put there, and they pretty graphically illustrated for us the amount of Styrofoam that we were using and pushing out into that waste stream here in the cafeterias and kitchens of Guilford Public Schools. I am proud to be able to announce tonight that at this time, we have eliminated the use of Styrofoam not only in the kitchen and cafeteria at Guilford Lakes School, but in all seven of our schools in the Guilford Public School system. We are no longer contributing to the production of Styrofoam products by purchasing those products, we are no longer moving those products through a system where they could be incinerated and return toxins to the environment, we're no longer putting Styrofoam products into the waste stream where they won't break down. It is a pleasure for me to introduce Principal Jill Hale from Guilford Lakes School, who is going to introduce all of you to members of the Guilford Lakes Green Team.
Good evening. I have three other parents here, Mrs. Medvecky and Mrs. Ireland and Mrs. Ward, they pretty much run the whole Green Team with the help of Mrs. Maurer and Mrs. Paris who weren't here. I'm not going to give you a lot of detail about the work of the Green Patrol at our school because the students are going to speak for themselves and give you all of the detail, but I can tell you Guilford Lakes are very proud of the recycling that we do. And Izzy Ireland and Ellie Weinzimmer are going to come up and tell you all about the Green Patrol's work.
Good evening, I'm Isabel Ireland and this is my friend Ellie Weinzimmer. We are fourth graders at Guilford Lakes who are pleased to represent the Guilford Lakes Green Patrol. We were so excited to learn that you had voted to get rid of Styrofoam trays and so quickly. Our Green Patrol would like to say huge thank you to Dr. Freeman, members of the Board, our Principal, Mrs. Hale, and everyone else for allowing us to join your meeting last June. We are happy that you agreed that Styrofoam doesn't belong in Guilford Schools and we are super happy to see fiber trays that decompose. We also want to thank our parent leaders, custodians, lunch aids, and fellow students for caring so much about reducing trash. We are very proud that we made a difference and even more proud that our schools are treating our earth with more respect each day.
You have shown us that speaking up about our concerns can make a big difference. We have learned that it is important to stand up for what we think is right. At first, it was hard thinking about talking to grownups, but you showed us that we didn't need to be scared. Many of the kids at Guilford Lakes saw that we stood up for what mattered to us and now a lot more kids feel like they can make, they might be able to make a difference too. As of last week, our Green Patrol team now has 111 kids, 69 more than we had last year. This year, we hope to visit classrooms, different schools, and even lawmakers in town to spread the word that taking care of earth is really important. Together, we want to create a fun buzz about being green with posters, activities, and intercome announcements. Thank you again for listening to us. Thanks to you, now we know what it feels like to have our voices count and we will never forget it. Thank you.
Mrs. Hale, I wonder if you could ask each of the members of the, each of the students who are here to just introduce themselves and tell us what grade they're in?
Sure, and you'll be excited to know that we have some fifth graders who came back who were here in June to speak to you.
Oh terrific.
So, we'll start here with Ellie and say your name really loudly and your grade.
I'm Ellie Weinzimmer and I'm in fourth grade.
I'm Isabel Ireland and I'm in fourth grade.
I'm Cassie Ward and I'm in second grade.
I'm Jack Russmussen and I'm in third grade.
I'm Owen Medvecky and I'm in third grade.
I'm Richard Russo and I am in fifth grade.
I'm Kristina Lachance and I'm fifth grade.
I'm Amanda Wong and I'm in fourth grade.
Well, on behalf of the entire Board, boys and girls, we want to thank you all for bringing this issue to our attention. We did, you made such good sense, your arguments were so positive and so well thought out that you're right, it didn't take us long to really reconsider this and don't get used to that, by the way. Sometimes it does take a little bit longer to get things done, but you made such good arguments and made such good sense that it really seemed like the right thing to do and we are grateful for your bringing it to our attention, so thank you all.
And it's worth noting that to the best of our knowledge, we are one of only two school districts in the state of Connecticut right now that can say that they are Styrofoam free in our kitchens and cafeterias. New Haven by statute and Guilford Public Schools because of the involvement of students like these, and it's something about which we're very, very proud.
Outstanding. Thank you.
You know, one of the important things that students have to learn in their careers in Guilford Public Schools is civics and political action. And a few years ago, we had students come to us to change the policy about where the junior promise held. We listened, they went through all the appropriate channels, and they've learned an important lesson. I'm proud of these kids who have done the same thing in a different area and they have learned, as Ellie said, an important lesson which they'll never forget, and that's how to affect, change. So, thanks also.
And we have one other student, Mrs. Hale?
Do you know your grade?
We're not just picking on you, everybody's already been through this.
Brett, Brett Biese and your grade?
I'm in fourth.
Fourth grade, terrific. Well, thank you all, we deeply, deeply appreciate it, we will look forward to your continuing to bring issues to our attention that we should know about moving forward as you move from Lakes to all of the other schools in the district, and we're very proud of you and we're very happy that you're our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, the next item on the agenda, I think as we've reordered it, it would be 8.4, which is a discussion on school start times. This issue has been on at least our radar for many, many years. I think every two or three years, it seems like there's a study that comes up that talks about the medical benefits of later start time for high school students. I don't think anybody on the Board quarrels with that evidence at all, the evidence is very clear. The question is what practically is the right approach, and I know, Dr. Freeman, you've got some alternatives at least for us to start thinking about. And then are there people here who want to be heard on this issue, who want to offer any comment on this issue at this time? No? Okay. Well, why don't we, we can take it up after the alternatives and maybe reconsider that. Go ahead, Dr. Freeman.
Thank you. What I wanted to do tonight was begin to shift the conversation, I think Mr. Bloss is exactly right. I think we all recognize the research and I don't think anybody quarrels with the research, and I think we all recognize pushing the start time of the school day deeper into the morning, later into the day would be an innate good. What I'd like to do today is to begin to bring some detail to that conversation and begin shifting our conversation, not to discuss should we look at moving the school start times, but to begin to discuss how could we accomplish that? If this is the goal, how do we go about that? It is not necessarily an easy question when we begin discussing how, and so what I want to do today is provide what I see as some givens in this conversation. And then, Mr. Boden and I have met with our busing contractor and we have tried to very roughly sketch out four different approaches, four different ways to consider approaching this solution, and I want to use those as simply a jumping off point for conversation. I would hope that after we share these options, there may be folks who are here tonight, either at this table or in the audience, who would be interested in joining the conversation and sharing some observations about the possible solutions. I'll apologize for craning my neck, but the current start times of our schools are listed on the slides behind me, and our greatest concern falls to our high school students who are asked to begin their classes at 7:25. Recognizing that students are on property before 7:25 and that many of our bus runs run 50 minutes to an hour, you recognize that we have students who must be out their door at 6:15 or 6:20 in the morning, 6 o'clock in the morning, to be here for a start time of 6:25. I also want to note, you'll recognize that our elementary schools, the last to dismiss, currently dismiss at 3:25. Again, with bus runs that could run an hour long, we have elementary students who come home from their school day at approximately 4:30. Recognizing that we accept the research, we appreciate the research, we don't question the innate good of this, we then want to talk about how to achieve this, and there are some parameters within which we must work. Again, we're challenged by how early we want our first group of students to be asked to arrive, but inevitably, there's a cascade effect to how late we want our last students in the day to return home at the close of school, and we are working within fiscal responsibilities. I have taken the liberty of drawing out different scenarios that would have different cost impacts, but clearly, whatever we choose to do, we want to be fiscally responsible as we make those decisions. And then there are some challenges. The number of buses within the current contract is tied to the fiscal challenge. We can increase the number of buses, currently, we have approximately enough buses to move a third of our population at any given time, and we run schools at three different opening and closing times. We could increase to fewer runs, but that would involve adding buses to the fleet. The size of our town is a challenge, Guilford is approximately 50 square miles, at least according to Wikipedia, it's 50 square miles. Wilton, by comparison, is about 27 square miles, so we're challenged by the geography running from the shoreline all the way up to Durham. I'll show you a little bit more about that in the next slide. I want to put this out early, and I want to say that we're challenged by the number of bus stops that the community has come to expect. Our buses tend to stop frequently, our students, particularly our youngest students, aren't asked, for the most part, to walk far distances to make it to their local bus stops. One possibility, as we look at compressing the bus service to be able to move the day, would be to offer fewer bus stops, and that will be one of the options that we can discuss moving forward. And then again, the length of the bus runs, and I've mentioned that once already, with the geography that we experience, we have options to change times, but we have always worked under the assumption that bus runs shouldn't be more than an hour long. We don't want to see students on a bus for 80 minutes, and some of the scenarios that I'll share may challenge the length of the bus runs in order to try to make components I wanted to note what we look at for average bus ridership. Our buses, for the most part, tend to seat comfortably approximately 75 students. Our high school buses are actually programmed to carry about 88 students. Our high school students tend only to ride the bus at about 50% usage, so we overprogram that bus. This Board is aware that we're required to offer a seat on the bus to every student every day, whether we know that that student drives a car and holds a parking pass or not. We intentionally overload the high school buses because statistically, we know that we won't be picking up 75 students even if we program it for 80 students, so we're already stretching the capacity of those high school buses. At our other levels, we have average ridership that comes in at around 75 or 80%, and so we don't intentionally overload those buses. We do want to be cautious that we don't load an elementary bus with 88 students and then one day end up with no seats, creating a safety concern. But as a starting point, I did want to note this, again, many of our buses run below capacity, not because we can't put enough stops on a run, but because of our geography and because of the length of those bus runs. To fill all of the buses to 100% capacity would make their runs exceptionally longer and well over an hour. So, these are some of the details around which we're trying to work, and we've put together, again, four very roughly sketched-out scenarios. These are by no means brought to an end stage of detail, but for conversation purposes, I wanted to show different thought approaches for how we could address this. One, in the simplest, would be to take the whole schedule and push everything an hour later in the day. If high school opens now at 7:25, what would be the effect of having high school open at 8:25 in the morning? It would provide high school students with an hour more sleep and we would simply take the runs with the swing times in the middle and push everything out. There'd be no financial impact of this, the bus company could absorb that, we have the contractual right to change those times with the bus company, we have the contractual authority to change school start and stop times with all of our bargaining units. The real impact of this comes with two groups of students. It could come with high school students who would find themselves needing to be dismissed early from classes for after-school responsibilities, athletic events could be the most common. We want to be careful about creating conflict between academics and athletics. More importantly to me in this scenario would be the impact to the elementary students and the elementary families. If elementary schools don't dismiss until 4:25 in the afternoon, we have elementary students who wouldn't be getting home until 5:30 in the evening, and so by taking the whole thing and pushing it out, we shift the goalposts. Obviously, it doesn't have to be an hour. With this scenario, we could pick any numbers, any minutes that we choose to select, so we could push it out 45 minutes or 30 minutes if we thought those were more reasonable times, but for the purpose of illustrating this thought experiment, this would be scenario one, just shift everything we do to later in the morning and later in the afternoon. Scenario number two looks at simply flipping the high school and the elementary schedules. I think my inexpert understanding of the research is that based on sleep research, this would make the most sense. Our youngest students tend to be the ones with the internal clocks that go off first in the morning. If we had the elementary schools first, the middle school in the middle, and the high school at the end, it might be the purest response to the research and to the medical, the medical aspects of that. Again, the cost impact would be essentially zero, we'd be working within the same three runs, just flip-flopping where they go. I do want to note there may be some minor impact there, the high school, because it's the only run where we have only one destination, is our easiest run, so there might be minor financial implications, but they would essentially be negligible in this scenario. The major impacts would come again to the elementary students, while they might be up at 6:00 in the morning. We do not at this time ask our four and five-year-olds to be at bus stops at 6:00. In January, a bus stop at 6:00 in the morning will be dark and it will be cold, and so there's going to be an impact there. There could be family impacts for families who need to see their elementary students out the door with their older students, particularly at the end of the day. I don't know how often this happens in Guilford, we don't have research around this, but there are families who need their older students to be home in the afternoon before their youngest come home. In this scenario, the elementary students are the first released at 2:05 and would be getting home at 3:00. If there are middle school or high school siblings who come home to care for the students, they're not available until those students have come home, so there's family impact we need to think about. Again, there could be impact to high school students who need to be excused at the end of a school day because of other responsibilities. The third scenario is a slightly different look at this, it would mean flip-flopping the high school with the middle school students. Here, I think we begin to whittle into the benefit. By moving the high school only to the second run, we don't get the start time as late for those 18 and 19-year-olds or the 17 and 18-year-olds. We're only netting about a half an hour change rather than more than that. We don't have our youngest students, we don't have four and five-year-olds out at our earliest pickup, but we do have fifth graders, we have 10th graders at Baldwin who would be out for those earliest bus pickups. We don't have high school students going as late in the afternoon, so the impact for early dismissal would be to some degree minimized here. We do have some financial implications because of the other high school busing concerns that we have with this essentially. Voag, charter schools, we offer busing for students who are outside of district. What we begin to run into in scenarios like this is our local bus runs competing with runs that we're able to send out of district. The high school being the smallest run because of ridership and only one destination allows us other buses to do those book ed runs, we lose that synergy in this model. There is limited impact at the end of the day for the elementary students, and what you see in the difference in color is that we did begin with this model to look at the idea of extending the swing time in between runs. So, not only do we flip-flop two schools here, but you will see that the elementary school begins to get pushed back a little bit, even though elementary is the last run, if we look to push it back 10 or 15 minutes in the day, by creating a swing time, a bigger swing time in between the two runs, we can net some bus time and we can reduce the impact. So, there's two different financial numbers up there, depending on whether we just want to make a change and try to live within existing times and not move the end dismissal for elementary at all, but it begins to show that you can actually save a little bit of system work by putting more time in between the runs. It doesn't push the elementary students to 5:30 getting home, but it does push them to about 4:45 in this scenario. Sure?
Keeping the bus stops, keeping the bus stops the way they are now?
Almost.
In terms of like stopping at everybody's house or consolidating buses?
So far.
Based on what we're doing now?
Yes, the three versions that we have shown so far have tried to work within existing bus stops and to work within the hard cap of an hour bus ride. Almost with every scenario, the bus company kept asking for more latitude, if we could make the runs a little bit longer, if we could reduce a few stops, and so in scenario number four, what we did was we tried to look a little more, we're not just using three runs and trying to move the three runs or flip-flop within those three runs, we actually looked at trying to do something that would be structurally different. This is in fact a scenario that has worked in other communities, and in fact, I spoke to you rather optimistically about this one. What we ran into was again, that 50-square-mile geography and the fact that we have, with the exception of the high school, multiple drop-offs for each of our runs. The elementary run has four points of debarcation and the middle school run has two stops to make it to. Wilton, again, I learned, has four schools, but they're all designated by grade level. There's a K3 school or a K2 school, a 4-5 school, a 6-8 school, so all of their runs only have one destination point, even the elementary runs, which makes it a more efficient system. In this model, what we looked at was what if we did purchase more buses in the contract and simply go to two bus runs? We looked at combining the Adams, our 7 and 8 school, with our high school, so we'd have a 7 through 12 bus run, and we looked at combining Baldwin, our 5-6 school, with our elementaries, creating a K through 6 bus run. We can do that, and we looked at the roots, the difficulty came in in the geography. In this model, to achieve this, it's the single largest financial impact that we've looked at so far, the number of buses that we need to put on to make this work surprised me, and we would lower the percentages of ridership. We'd be running more buses, the same distances, but with fewer riders. We would have bus runs that begin to inch up over an hour long and we would be reducing bus stops. I'm no longer optimistic about this solution, the geography of Guilford just worked against this being a viable solution. At this cost impact, with bus runs that go over an hour and needing to take away bus stops that the community has become comfortable with, this is no longer the top of my priority choice. I'm actually only showing it because I want to illustrate the thought experiment. The bus company modeled every single bus run in the community for this model before we came up, even with these rough numbers. I don't think they were as surprised as I was, but we were all a little bit surprised at the impact of this. In the other models, we ran sample bus runs, we didn't run every single bus run, our bus manager took the runs that she anticipated would be the most challenging. We have runs that need to leave Guilford and go into Branford to be able to be completed, we have some runs that need to leave Guilford and go into Durham before they can enter some other neighborhoods in Guilford. Those were the runs that we modeled for the other scenarios, just to get a sense of how viable they would be. I know that Mr. Mousenti and Mr. Jarvis are here tonight to be part of the conversation, I've encouraged some of our elementary principals, I know that they're here tonight. Pushing the start time, I think, is an innate good. How we push the start time is going to be the challenge in any community, and I think why so few districts have chosen to tackle this issue at this point. This was the direction we started, our bus company is rolling up their sleeves and engaging in the modeling with us. I'm open to feedback, comments, questions, and direction for how we should continue to pursue this.
Go ahead.
A question on scenario number three, the last bullet up missed on the handout is no STA transportation to out-of-town athletics? Is that, what is?
This is one with the high school sandwiched in the middle, between the two runs that require all the buses. It gets very difficult.
This is again the extra bus.
Yeah, right now, what happens is that we don't use all of our buses for the high school run, and when the high school appears at one end of the cycle, either first or third, it gives us the opportunity to borrow some of those buses and be able to do a special event run. A challenge in putting it in the middle is going to fall to athletic scheduling, it's going to be difficult, not only are we going to be impacted and maybe having a team need to sign out of class early to get to an athletic event, but we're not going to be able to rely on STA to do that transportation, they won't have time to get a team out of town and back to do their elementary run that follows.
I'm sorry, how do they do it now with the high school being the first one out?
Because we can start those things a little bit before the rest of dismissal, they're able to get them, drop them off, and then get back and not go out for pickup later, and sometimes, we still have difficulty with them being late for pickup after an elementary run that runs late, but sandwiching in the middle makes it the most challenging of all.
Because you can't start earlier and you can't.
I did get an email from STA late last week, they're still looking at that, I think that there's been some movement, they've been able to say they might be able to afford some, but it's not going to be what we're used to. We might be looking at charter buses, we might be looking at more expensive options to move teams, and we'd be looking at moving teams, again, maybe pushed into the school day, into the end of the school day.
But we could get the charter buses if we needed to.
I wonder if Mr. Jarvis and Mr. Mousenti can maybe come up and just join us?
I think that's an open question.
Talking about some of these practical issues.
Well, sort of thinking out loud, I think it was scenario two, where the elementary school kids go out very early, at least, I mean, even if you shifted it to not a full hour, the elementary school students are picked up in their driveway, whereas if you had the Adams and Baldwin kids at 7:25, you have 10-year-olds, I mean, our neighborhood, they stand on the side of State Street at that hour, so they would be out there in the dark at age 10 rather than getting five-year-olds picked up at the bottom of their driveway.
So, when I look at this, you know, I think, I don't know if I speak for all Board members, but I'm pretty convinced that the science is out there that this is the right thing to do, and what I've heard almost unanimously from mothers, at least, is that this would be a good thing for their children, and I certainly see it happening in my kids. When I look at the scenarios, the first one, pushing everything an hour later, you know, elementary school starting at 10:10 just doesn't seem viable for working parents in some ways. Scenario four, for the reasons you mentioned, the budget, and also just the long bus rides, like the 70, 80-minute bus rides is probably not going to work.
Right.
Flipping elementary and high school, possibly, but that is very early for the elementary schools. I'm just wondering about the combination of some degree of scenario one and possibly scenario three, meaning instead of pushing it a full hour, push it 20 minutes, the whole thing, and then flip, you know, the middle school and the high school, that would get, you know, the high school close to an hour later. That would get, you know, the high school close to an hour later. So, then we get into more, I think, the impact of the athletics, which is, I guess, the thing that I've heard most from the community is concerned about that. And maybe Mr. Jarvis can speak about that. But I guess my question sort of was, what do you think about some sort of combination of scenarios?
Let me make one.
Well, I think absolutely.
Make one observation, though, before we, we need to, all of us need to have, keep an open mind on all of these scenarios and including the fifth scenario, which is not stated, which is leave it as it is. And that is an alternative. I think Mr. Sands suggested that we actually try to do a meeting where we ask specifically for public input. I think that's a very good idea.
I think that's a great idea.
This is actually another issue that I think is probably subject to a survey much more than some issues perhaps, but this may be one we want to think about, doing a parental survey on, because, you know, I think what Dr. Moore said is right. The goal is very, very clear. The how to get to the goal in a way that is reasonable is, presents some challenges. It does. But Mr. Jarvis, I wonder if we can hear from you about some of the challenges that you would face from the athletic department point of view?
Currently, we have, our buses leave about 2:20 to 2:30 to travel all across our league for 3:45 subvarsity and varsity start times. So, by pushing the times back, we would try to push those, we'd ask other groups or other teams that we play to push those times back to accommodate us. But it'd be very difficult in our current situation to do that. You know, it's a point of traveling, it's a point of 95 traffic that you don't know what's going on or what's happening. If we put our, if we push our times back for our own teams, we'd be practicing later and we'd probably run into youth sports. A lot of our fields are co-shared with youth sports. They come in after, after our varsity teams are done. So, with our practice times, that would be problems. In the Wilton case, they have two turf fields, both with lights. They have a turf base, I mean, a lighted baseball field, lighted softball field. So, they could have practices and games later into the evening where we just have the turf stadium with lights. That's the only aspect, in Bittner Park, the aspect to have our games later in the evening. So, it would definitely impact us and it'd be a lot of maneuvering to get it to work.
Are charter buses always available?
In the springtime, I could have 10 buses going out on a run. And I have, I've had a big problem in the past with our bus company being able to fill all those times. So, if we have a 2:20 bus, usually they're back for the 3:25 pickup of the elementary school. But there are a lot of times where they have to reach out to Adam Killingworth or they have to reach out to other districts to try to fill our bus needs for athletics, especially in the springtime. So, are they available? Yes, at a certain cost.
So, right now, if somebody's playing an away game, they'll leave school early, like they'll miss some.
No, it depends on where they're going, the venue, what's going on and what's happening. But in the average, it's about 2:20 to 2:30 we get a bus. So, we get out at 2:08 and then they get to locker room, they grab their stuff, and they hop on the 2:20 bus and they're off.
So, are they missing any classes currently?
No. If there's.
Infrequently?
Very infrequent, infrequently, yes.
Mr. Masenti, how about other after-school activities?
You know, Jake and I started talking about this, and this may not be the appropriate venue to discuss all of these, but in addition to aligning either our programs with Park and Rec or they with us, you know, a later-ending time does conflict maybe with the use of facilities and, as Jake said, those programs. Then I talked, I thought about how we use Guilford Youth and Family Services, ECA, Bradford IOP, Yale IOP, our math team that travels in the Middlesex County Math League where everyone starts at a certain time, you know, pulling kids out of, out of school. We started having conversations about it. And so, if we do change our times and we do have a later-ending time, those are all pieces of the puzzle that we'd have to work through in terms of getting our kids to these services at the appropriate time. I don't know if they would manage their services for us to accommodate our times. You know, presently, our ECA kids take five classes here and then they take one or two classes at ECA. They leave here at 12 o'clock. So, if we move our times, they would only be taking, you know, they would be missing, they'd have to get to ECA at noon. So, they, they would be missing an additional class period as well.
How many students are in ECA now?
About 15. We send 14 or 15 kids to ECA. So, I mean, these are nuances.
We just have to work these out.
Yeah, exactly. I'm just bringing them to your attention. There's a number of things we'd have to work out.
As Dr. Freeman said, we are at the very beginning of a discussion that's been had to different degrees for the last 10 or 12 years at least. So, I think we can, we certainly are going to continue to look at this thoughtfully and try to address all of those issues. Other questions?
Just an observation. It seems to me we also have to prioritize. And from what we've heard from the sleep researchers and from what the Academy of Pediatrics has stated and from my own reading, the number-one concern for me is academic performance and achievement. We've stated that over and over as our goal. And it's clear that the research shows that when students start, high school students start later, their academic performance goes up. That, to me, is priority number one. Priority number two would shock me when the researchers pointed this out, that there's a 70% reduction in car accidents when we start high school later. Now, we're talking about lives and that trumps, in my view, some of these other concerns that Mr. Masenti mentioned and that Mr. Jarvis mentioned. Those are problems and those I think we can work out. It would be far better, in my judgment, if we had our neighbors trying to do the same thing. They're much smaller geographically, especially our neighbor to the east who we compete with athletically. And they're a much smaller town and, but I don't see that they're too interested in changing their start time. I wish we could induce them to think about that. That would make some of these concerns easier. Yes, sir?
It's another aspect that when we play, we go away to contests, we're really held to when they start because they have different events and things going on and stuff in their community. So, if they have a 3:45 start time, they might give us a little leeway, but it's a 3:45 start time. You know, it's an away event. We don't have really control of it at our own venue. Another thing I thought about is, and we talked about middle school, we have a middle school athletic program also. By shifting that time, you know, it's going to definitely affect it. They get out at 2:40, they're on a 2:45 bus for a 3:45 game to where they're going and what's happening and same vice versa. So, those are some things to think about.
And is there any discussion or interest at all regionally? This is, I mean, I think what Dr. Myers said is right. This actually is an issue that begs to be decided, not on a town-by-town basis, but on a more regional basis. Is there any discussion between the athletic conferences or the superintendent's group or, and I know Mrs. Dudley's already told us that the Project Learn is not interested in, not at all.
So, Mrs. Dudley has brought it up at Learn. I've brought it up at superintendent, two different regional superintendent meetings and there's not a lot of interest. There is growing awareness of the research. There's been a lot of coverage of this topic recently. I don't know if athletic directors have been having conversation about it.
No, athletic directors try very hard not to have night games because they don't want to stay out and be away from their family. But what happens is in the venues that come about, we try to get the kids out at the contest, back home safely, and then back home as quick as possible to do their schoolwork and to get their rest and be with their families. So, we all, we push for 3:45, 3:30, 4 o'clock games.
How many away games do we have?
Say that again?
How many away games do we have?
Well, if we have a 20-game season, we have 10 away games. So, it depends on the number of games.
Right. But overall, I mean, is it varsity?
16. I don't know the full.
That'd be helpful to know.
I feel like this has come up before, but Wilton, in their change made, are letting kids out early on away games? How are they dealing with athletics? Is that what they're doing?
Yes. We play Wilton and they're coming to us for a 3:45 game. They're letting their team out early.
The athletic director told me that when they play an in-conference game, their conference partners are pretty good about starting games a little later so they don't have to miss class. But when they play outside the conference or have to travel the state, the kids are getting out of class early.
And they'll have later games in their home venue.
Right.
To accommodate their time because they have the lights.
We've referred to Wilton a number of times. What time does the Wilton High School start currently?
They have an 8:10 bell. I believe that some years ago, they were even, they were later than that, but they've crept back early. And I know that it was an unscientific study, but at a Wilton game, I think Mr. Masenti took the opportunity to speak to some of their students.
Yes.
Share their perceptions.
I was speaking with the athletic director and probably about 25 of the cheerleaders just all of a sudden surrounded us. They heard us talking about the late times and they just were just so excited about it. Just said, you know, that is the way to go, you know, we love it. And they were really optimistic about it. I mean, I spoke to you about a number of things that we'd have to iron out if we went forward, but.
And I think last year, you spoke to the Wilton principal. Did they see any academic impact?
No, she had not seen, she had not, she was not able to share any improvements, nor do I think that they, she was in the, I don't think she was prepared to even share that with me, nor had they really looked.
Yeah, that's something very hard to study on a one-school basis.
It has to be fairly structured and.
With multiple researchers on the board here, I'd be reluctant to.
I think one thing that we need to keep in mind here is, yes, it would be better if we could get the whole shoreline to do this, but sometimes, somebody has to be first. And if we do it, it will definitely cause the other districts to focus on it more.
Well, I shouldn't.
And I think that there may be some transitional period where we're out in front, but I'd be very surprised if in two or three years, it hasn't spread. I mean, to me, this is the kind of issue, sort of like all-day kindergarten, where I think the administration has done a very good job of showing us some alternatives and showing us what some of the trade-offs are. But I think we need to listen to the community and we need to listen to the parents and see where the, you know, where the trade-offs are and what they're prepared to do and what they're not prepared to do. And that's why I think we need to have some open forums and public hearings on this to get more input to the board. I think this is something that we really need to focus on. I'm in favor of doing this. I just don't know how to do it yet. And that's what I think we need to get some input on.
Oh, in that respect, I don't think, I don't think, I think he's probably okay with me mentioning this. We do have a special guest here this evening, David Joy, who is the chairman of the South Windsor Board of Education, is in the audience. They are considering, I guess, at least.
More or less discussing it.
More or less discussing it. So, he actually just noticed it in the paper and decided to come down for some clam chowder and some review of it. I did give him Dr. Freeman's materials. So, you know, we were sort of toward the end of the curve on full-day kindergarten. Maybe, maybe you're right. Maybe we're toward the beginning of the curve on this.
Nothing wrong with that. I think scheduling a special meeting, I think that just this meeting and just showing what some detail could look like will encourage people to, I mean, at the beginning of the meeting, nobody felt comfortable commenting because I don't think we've put any detail out around it. I could certainly, Dr. Moore, take a run at taking a couple scenarios and hybridizing them together and bringing it even to a level of slightly greater sophistication so that we could say there was some interest, there was a suggestion of, yes, keeping, you know, maybe flip-flopping high school with middle school, but then moving the times a little bit. I could certainly add more detail to that.
There are a nearly infinite number of places on the spectrum here, you know. And so, no, you're right. I think we need to find out what our community is interested in. Mr. Joy, do you want to say anything? Do you want to contribute, offer any?
All ears.
All ears, okay.
I'm wondering whether our student reps have any thoughts. I don't want to put you on the spot. I know you have thoughts.
Well, it sounds as if you've already made the decision to push back the high school start time, so I haven't.
Can I just? No, no. There have been no decisions made.
Well, in that case, personally, in my experience, it hasn't really affected me. But I, then again, I didn't hear any of like the statistics or things that you brought up at previous meetings or over the past 10 or 12 years you've been talking about this. So, I don't think I'm really well-informed enough to.
What do you think the rest of the student body would say? I mean, or you know what, actually, a fairer question would be, or suggestion is if between now and the next meeting, you could maybe start to just talk to folks and say, you know, how important would this be to you? Is it something that you think would work or is it something that would be helpful?
I, because this has kind of been a topic that everyone has been talking about recently throughout the high school, I've kind of been listening because I was expecting this question at the meeting. So, also, not speaking as an expert, and I don't really know all the research that has gone into this, but I think a question that a lot of people are asking is whether this would really help because if we are pushing the schedule back an hour to lengthen our time in the morning, I think a lot of the students are thinking that we would just end up staying up an hour later to finish our work if we're still in school an hour, if that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
Everything would just shift. So, it's possible, again, because I don't really know all the research, that it's really just the effect that waking up later would have that would be beneficial. But I think also, we would really just end up having the same amount of sleep.
Well, that's, I think, the hope or the expectation, if we go down this road, the expectation would be that teenagers would get to sleep, get to bed at the same time and then just wake up a little bit later so that there would be a net advantage. And that's certainly something that we've thought about and that's, that's an issue, you know, how meaningful is it?
I mean, interestingly, the studies that I looked at actually said that when they put the start time a bit later, some of the kids actually got to sleep earlier.
Yeah, no, some of the research has suggested.
And I think it had to do with. I could actually send you a link to these studies.
Being more efficient in getting their work done and not, you know, just.
Adolescents have a definite sleep cycle, just, we all do. It's just different for adolescents than it is for elementary kids. And the parents of kids in elementary school talk about how their kids are up at 6:00 in the morning. Whether they want to be or not, they're up at 6:00. And now, what do they do? So, but you don't find teenagers on Saturday and Sunday up at 6:00. It just doesn't happen unless there's some reason for it.
Well, I think some of what we know from research as well is, Mark, your point is well-taken and it sounds like your fellow students have a really good question there. We do know that in some cases, it's not even staying up to do work. It's simply that they are not tired.
Right.
Until 11:00. So, that it may not be that they stay up an extra hour, that they fall asleep when they naturally do and then they gain the extra time by sleeping later. I would also like to remind, remind us that we did get, now maybe a month ago, about 170 student signatures in support of later start times that came to the board. So, that I think that, that doesn't mean there aren't these great questions coming with that request, but it sounds like further information from students on opinions would be really.
The other guest that we have here among a number in the audience, but Craig Cannapari, who's director of the Pediatric Sleep Center at Yale, is that correct? I don't know if he, you know, I know we have an opportunity for public comment and question.
Yeah, and you, can you?
If you wanted to address any of those issues specifically.
I don't need the chair to stand on here. I really appreciate the time and effort you guys have put into considering this because I know that it's complicated. And, you know, it's great to see, having moved to Guilford a year ago, that the school district really is being in the forefront of things. New state-of-the-art high school, considering the International Baccalaureate Program. And school start times are an issue that I'm really passionate about. I spoke last time, so I'm not going to believe we're the same points, but essentially, there's a preponderance of evidence that later school start times lead to teenagers, in fact, getting more sleep. And that, you know, the concern has been that if kids, if you let them sleep in later, well, they're just going to stay up later. And it doesn't, the research doesn't seem to have borne that out for whatever reason. And I will say, there was one study that came out recently comparing two school districts in Virginia that had start times that were different by about an hour and 25 minutes. And in those two school districts that are otherwise demographically and geographically similar, there was about a 35% decrease in the risk of car accidents in teenagers in the district with later school start times. It's a sort of, it's a dose-response effect, meaning the later they get up, you know, the 70% number comes from a school district that moved their start times an hour and a half later, which is hard to do. But I don't think there's any doubt that it is safer for kids. I mean, honestly, no offense, guys, but teenagers are terrible drivers statistically speaking and sleep deprivation. Drowsy driving is like drunk driving. is like drunk driving. We all know drunk driving is bad. But then we're structuring things so the teenagers are on the road, sleep deprived. Now, in regards to a couple of Dr. Freeman's points, younger kids are indeed prone to earlier school, earlier sleep times and wake times. The difference is about two hours, more or less. So around the onset of puberty, people's body clocks adjust so that they want to go to sleep about two hours later, and then get up two hours later. So if you take a kid in elementary school who maybe needs 10 hours of sleep a night, and they're sleeping, like my kids, from 8:00 to 6:00, then they're, they become teenagers that need nine hours of sleep. They're, so ideally physiologically, we're looking at like a 10 or 11:00 sleep to 8:00 in the morning sleep period. I'm just talking physiologically speaking. So many teenagers are incapable of falling asleep before 11:00, even if they get in bed, and I see this in sleep clinic all the time, they get in bed at 9:00 because they're tired, and they want to not be tired the next day, but they can't fall asleep for a couple of hours. And, you know, these are well-intentioned. Kids are trying to do the right thing, but, you know, you don't have to resort to medications to make it so someone can get enough sleep. In response to scenario three specifically, I do think that middle school kids would be more physiologically tolerant of an early school start time compared to high school students, just because that circadian shift happens, you know, in puberty. So most kids between 12 and 14. And, you know, that's all I have to say. I don't know if you guys have any specific questions for me. I'm happy to provide you guys with materials, or come to speak at a public meeting, or what have you. But I do think this is a really important issue in our town. The kids get on the bus pretty early.
I think in many of our conversations, we've just stipulated to the research. I think if we do schedule a public hearing, it might make sense for me to provide one fairly detailed scenario and ask you to speak to just overview some of what we're stipulating to, so that an audience, and you guys were sort of put at a disadvantage, you both said, we haven't heard all that research that you guys keep agreeing with. So I think it would be great if you'd be willing to come out this summer.
And if there are studies, or if there is research that you think, we, we know that pediatrics, the study that was just in pediatrics, I think last year, we, I think distributed copies of that. But if you can send us links to anything else, just send it to Dr. Freeman, and he can distribute it to the rest of us.
There was a great summary document put together by the people at DC Children's for the Fairfax School District, which essentially summarizes all of this. And if you got, I can send it out to you guys. It's a, it's a great summary of all this research, and it's up to date as of this year.
That'd be very helpful.
So guys, there's going to be a pop quiz at the end, okay?
That's right. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And does anybody else, I know, I'm sure there's some other people here that are interested in this. Does anybody else want to offer any other comments at this point, or? All right. Yes, please.
One thing I haven't heard, I don't need the microphone, I allow them now. The one thing I didn't hear talked about at all, I know there's at least one other town in the state that has looked into this, that went with option five, that didn't want to go with option five, but the one issue you guys didn't talk about at all is the union implications, which I'm sure will, is actually, what I'm hearing is that's the reason why they went option five. And I don't hear that in the financial implications.
Well, there's a reason, there's a reason you haven't heard that. The question, just for the purposes, Mr. Graziano, I'm sure would appreciate me repeating, so we can get onto the tape. The question was, are there union implications, or salary implications, other expense implications for changing start times? The answer is, based on our contracts, the answer is no. We have the discretion to begin the school day when we want, under our various contracts. I think it's certainly something we would like to talk to with some of our, of our, of our groups. But we have the contractual rights to do any of these scenarios, so that's not going to be an issue. There are lots of other issues. I'm grateful that that's, that we're, that the number of issues are at least not infinite, as we try to move forward. But it's complicated enough.
Right. And I think it's worth reminding everybody, Mr. Blas did note that there is an option to do nothing. And at this point, until we hear from a larger portion of the community, we're not sure if this is a direction we're ready to go, if it's going to be a slightly lengthier process. So it's premature to have had conversations with bargaining units at this point. Doesn't mean that we won't have those important conversations.
Yes.
At the risk of perhaps a naive question, but Mr. Masenti, you know, as I think about the stuff and different alternatives, and really trying to think outside the box, and, you know, if, if we were in a position to consider a later start time that might impact athletics a little bit, and might require kids missing the last period occasionally, I mean, is it, is it possible to create schedules where there are more electives eighth period than there might be core courses? Or, I mean, is, do we have anything in terms of flexibility around what, and obviously, eighth period for the three-letter days that eighth period occurs, and, you know, it's complicated. But can we even think that, are there ways to consider even those types of things to lessen impact?
We can consider that, but it's more than period eight, it's period six and eight.
Well, that's, right.
Yeah, four-day cycle, and we rotate our classes. So you'd have periods six and eight that would be impacted for kids, whether they're going to ECA, whether they're going to ball games, whether they're going to, outside of school doctor's appointments as well. I mean, there, there's a number of issues that are beyond this evening's conversation.
Right.
I like everything that our Yale colleagues spoke to us about, and Dr. Myers about, you know, this being in the best interest of children. And this principal, along with every board member here, and our superintendent, make decisions all for those reasons. But there's, there's so much on the table still in terms of the high school. I can't speak for my colleagues at the elementary and middle school, but for the high school, there are a lot of things. Our crossroads program is an afternoon program. We moved to a later time. That crossroads program could become an evening program. Do you want teachers teaching till 5:30 or 6:00 in the evening? I know it's not a contractual issue today, but that gentleman brings up an issue where, you know, we're not there yet to get input from our staff. We don't know enough yet to tell them what we're looking at, other than these, these items right here. But I look at our VIP placement. You know, we have services in the afternoon, community businesses that we place our VIP kids at. And the later we get out of school, I don't know, you know, will they be able to accommodate the current placements that we have? I worry about all those. But worry doesn't mean that, that it's, you know, I'm throwing up a wall here. I want what's best for children, but I think there's a lot that we have to vet out in this process. When I look at those four schedules, I look at, if you go to a schedule one or two, I think that would be very, very difficult for the high school to make those adjustments, because of the extreme late times that they're out of school. Options three and four probably are doable. It just takes a lot of, it'll take a lot of work and a lot of, probably reorganizing or readjusting what we do. And that's okay too.
It's also worth noting that this may be a change that does not necessarily have to happen for this community all at once. It seems like Wilton's experience was that they went to an extreme and then edged back a little bit. And that might be okay if we go that route. We can also talk about trying to take smaller, reasonable bites and reassess at a certain amount of time. If we were to work on a schedule that pushed a school 20 minutes or half an hour, and then came back in two years to say, was it doable? Was it, was it a positive experience? And do you want to go further? There's, there's the small bite approach. There's all sorts of ways to think about moving forward with this. I do think that bringing the conversation to the attention of our community, and now scheduling a date and inviting them to come out and speak to all of you is the next important step.
And I guess I would like to echo that we do that and really include students. I mean, we're talking about, you know, young adults here who I think are going to, some of whom have let me know, that they're going to be paying attention to how we think about that and what we prioritize in the end. And to have a good sense of how they feel about it is going to be pretty important. I, I've heard from a number of students that really would like to not be completely fatigued by Friday morning. And I, so I think that how we think about it and what we prioritize for our young people, in the eyes of our young people, is going to be pretty important.
The one item I would be very reluctant to endorse, that I'd have to hear a lot of good reasons for, would be a school bus run that was over, say, 60 minutes, or maybe even 50 minutes. That's just a lot of time twice a day on a bus.
Absolutely.
That's, other than that, really, all options, including doing nothing, is worth investigating further.
And I think as we move forward, I would like to hear from the elementary principals and, and other staff, frankly, about what, not only, not only the principals, but maybe we can talk to the executive committee of the GEA and see, see what their membership thinks would be educationally useful. This is, this is just a classic example of a decision that, whatever direction we go in, we've got to try to listen to everybody. Students, parents, teachers, principals, bus drivers.
Right.
Everybody. Athletic participants.
I also want to note, we've chosen to bring this conversation forward at the beginning of this school year. I guess we're almost halfway into it. It may not actually be the beginning of the school year any longer. And it is part of this budget cycle. But as we wade into the conversation, we also need to remind ourselves that there's no artificial due date connected to this. With, with Veterans Day, we began a conversation about a change that we don't expect to begin seriously considering for a year. We've gone deeper into this conversation this year than we did last year already. Should we begin a conversation and feel like the community needs time to digest that conversation, I just want to remind us that there's a small bite approach, there's September of 15, but there's also September of 16. There are options in how we choose to do this. I don't want the community to feel that we are rushing a conversation or a decision on them. So there are ways to approach this, to be thoughtful and be forward-moving, but maybe not move as quickly as, as everybody would like to move. Sometimes moving a little more slowly gets a little more buy-in.
That's fine. But I think our experience in the past, when this topic has come up, is that we've discussed it, and then it went away for years.
Yep.
And then it resurfaces. I would like to see a plan. And if it takes a year of study, of listening, of getting, as Ted suggests, of getting more input from the community, that's fine. But I really want to have us have an outline of how we're going to proceed to make a decision.
Well, I think, to be fair, A, we have that, and B, we, by what we've done here tonight, we're already further along than we've ever been.
That's true.
And I'm not suggesting that if we ignore this, it will go away. That is not my intention.
No, no, okay.
No, I'm not accusing anybody of ignoring it. I'm saying that we should have a clear idea of when we will schedule by season a community forum, when we will have other.
I'd like to try to do something in January, if we can, frankly, because of the potential budget impact.
Yes, I'll begin scheduling that tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
That's fine.
Does anybody, anybody else in the public want to make any comments on this issue specifically at this point? Okay, yes, please.
Marian Breeze, 42 Arrowhead Drive. I would just ask that you also maybe reach out to districts that have made the change, either in Virginia or in other places, and ask their staff about the impacts. Because I think it's important to hear from staff members who've gone through the change, and who might have a very different perspective than staff who haven't gone through that before. And same thing if there are reports or information coming from students who have experienced that change. There might be studies or something that could reflect that information. And lastly, I'd like to ask if you happen to know if there are any community savings, if, for example, you have 50% of the community, of the high school community, taking buses now. I know my kids will be on the bus in a heartbeat if it, if it's an 8:00 start time, and I won't drive them to school anymore in the morning. And I imagine there's a lot of other high school parents who would feel the same way. So I'm wondering if there are savings for the community, or if there's a safety issue, if fewer people are driving in the morning and more kids are on buses. So just ask that you might consider those.
Think about that. That's going to be very hard to quantify.
Yeah.
It might be hard to quantify, but there have been emails that usually go out in the wintertime, asking parents, please put your kids on the bus, to keep the roads safer, particularly in storms.
Right. I think certainly it's going to, right, it's going to be safer with fewer cars. And obviously, as a community, we'd be burning less fuel. It would, I, yeah, I'd be challenged to figure out how to quantify that. But yes, I'd like to see more kids on our buses. It would be a positive, certainly for the residents of New England Drive.
Absolutely. And it might not be quantifiable, but at least something that should be considered by the school and by the community. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, well, we'll, let's just defer this conversation. We'll put it back on the January agenda, and we will, or figure out what we're going to do next, in terms of whether we do a special meeting, and whether we talk about doing a survey, or whatever. But, and then if we can get any data, any research, we'll be happy to circulate it, and then we can continue to have a full discussion about it. All right? The agenda is a mess, obviously, at this point, but in light of, can I just, are people here for other agenda items? Is there anybody here who wants to address us on another agenda item? I guess not. Okay. Why don't we go to student representatives at this point, just so we can get you out of here, so you can go home and get to sleep. I'm sure you're going to be in bed in a half an hour, right?
I have some information on the Guilford Lakes Elementary School. Across the district, actually, students in the third and fourth grade now have access to Chromebooks. And at Guilford Lakes specifically, they have been using the Chromebook to conduct research and to word process. So, and the technology has been used well so far. And on Tuesday, November 25th, the three kindergarten classes at Guilford Lakes came together for a snack and a great Thanksgiving story, which is kind of a Guilford Lakes tradition. I remember doing that myself. And police visit the school regularly. The officers have become part of the school family, visiting lunch, classes, and assemblies. So they've been integrated very well. Additionally, just a brief note on the happenings at the high school. Guilford High School Voices, the symphony orchestra and concert choir performed very successfully at the Guilford High School's annual holiday concerts. This past weekend, on the fifth and sixth, there were two concerts each night.
And gee, can I ask, on the fifth, at least, in the first performance, were there any, say, special conductors? Anybody, Mr. Masenti, if you could, if he's, he's chatting with Mr. Bowden, but were you there at the, at the fir-, I don't know if he did this at all of them.
I'm in the Guilford High School Voices, so, yes.
All right. So here's my question, here's what happened.
I think he did it.
Okay, so here's what happened. Anyway, they're, you're doing the, what is it, the third piece of the orchestra?
Yes.
And, and so, Mr. Bowden brings up and says that we have a special guest conductor, and Mr. Masenti came up and conducted the, the third piece. Come on up, Mr. Masenti, we want to just.
By the third performance, he was still so nervous that he thought he might not make it to the, to the conductor's stand.
I, well, I will say a couple of things about it. One is, he appeared that he knew what he was doing. Now, that's to, that's to somebody who really isn't the most musical person in the, in the, in the entire building. But did you guys know that that was going to happen?
Don't put him on the spot like that.
I did not, actually. I'm not in the symphony orchestra. So I, that was a surprise to me. But I, the symphony orchestra definitely did. I think they'd been rehearsing that.
We kept it quiet, because I made the decision the last time. I told Tom, if you call my name, and I go like this, I'm not coming up. But that was a perfect example, those two evenings, of a student body carrying the old man, and it carried me for two nights.
Well, I will, I will say, the other thing I was just going to observe is that the students were, I think, were very excited and happy that you did that, and the parents as well, right? Certainly, that was my distinct impression, that they thought that was pretty neat. And I think the other people in the, in the audience did. And do you know what you're doing, just out of curiosity, or is this a new thing?
Absolutely not.
Just curious. All right. Thank you.
So I spoke to Mr. Grimm from the Calvin Lee Elementary School, and he informed me that they held a successful math night for students' families on November 12, and that students took the lead to share activities from the bridges into mathematics resources, and they helped their family members think and problem-solve. And they are also participating in the Hour of Code Project during the first two weeks of December, which is a global initiative to promote computer science and programming. And it involves online tutorials and activities to expose students to writing computer code. And then, at the high school during November, a couple of weeks ago, they held a presentation on the IB program for students, for junior students and senior students who currently take AP classes. And Mr. Trenzey led the presentation, and Mr. Masenti took questions afterward. And he also mentioned that the president of DePaul came to speak to the. And he also mentioned that the president of DePaul came to speak to the IB coordinators, and that a survey was handed out to, I believe, the sophomores to see who would be interested in a program like IB. And also, currently, the high school winter sports are underway. The triads just ended for some of the sports, and so fall sports are over. And finally, for the seniors, the college search continues to progress with the early decision, early action deadlines passed and the regular decision deadline coming up on January 1st. And for students currently at college, they're returning home this week and next.
Thank you.
Questions? Questions, thoughts, comments? Okay, well, thank you very much. We'll look forward to hearing from you in January then, and any thoughts you have. We'll try to send you some of those studies on start times, and any thoughts you have, feel free to just email us, or we can talk about it next month. All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for staying late today.
I guess we ought to, what other things, Mr. Gloss, what are you, you're free to stay as long as you want, I'm just trying to, you know, we've been at it for an hour and change already, and is there something in particular you want to hear about?
I guess I thought there was a gen item about high achieving students.
Yeah, okay, we can do that. Is that what everybody else, what else are people here about? Same thing? Okay, why don't we just go to that then, if that's all right, Dr. Freeman?
I'm happy to.
This agenda is going to be a really hard one to follow as we do next month's minutes, but, that's fine.
Item 8.3, I am happy to report that Dr. Jim Borland was in district again Thursday and Friday. He completed his five days of time in the district. During that time, these are not unique counts, some folks participated in more than one meeting, but Dr. Borland met with eight Board of Education members, he met with 27 administrators, he met with 35 students spread across Baldwin, Adam, and the high schools, in the high school, he met with 35 teaching staff, and across two evenings, he met with 70 parents who came out to be part of this conversation. Early in the summer, he met with Dr. Keenan and myself, and we provided him with as much documentation as we could provide. At the end of his visit, he thanked us for the time, we asked him if he felt there was anybody else that he wanted to see, and he said that he felt comfortable this week to begin looking at observations, recommendations, suggestions for the Guilford school system moving forward. So he's going to begin drafting this week. He knows that he is free to contact Dr. Keenan and myself if he has questions while he's going through that drafting. He hopes to have a report in our hand before the new year that would again have observations, suggestions, and recommendations for how we can continue to support our highest achieving students as we move forward. I gave him a list of topics that we wanted him specifically to comment on. It included communications with parents, it included tracking of students, monitoring of student performance, it included math specifically, and the math sequence that we have laid out in school, it included the current AP programming and the suggested inclusion of IB as we move forward, and so he felt comfortable and is excited to begin the drafting, and we wait to hear what he has to share with us.
So I know that the board was all invited to speak with him, and I appreciated that opportunity, and there were also two nights for the parents. Can you speak to how the teachers and the students, were they selected by the administration, or were they invited, or was there open forums with him, or how did that happen?
No, there were no open forums for students or for teachers. For students, we identified students who were involved in AP classes, or advanced, or compacted, or accelerated curriculum offerings primarily. The students that we wanted to be meeting with Dr. Borland were students who we felt were high achieving, and we wanted to know how we were doing. In fact, I know that when he spoke with high school students and middle school students, he asked them to think back to their experiences at the elementary school, and we also secured parental permission for the middle school students to be part of those conversations. The teachers were generally selected by experience, the same way that we select when we do most things. We wanted to provide a broad palette, so those meetings happened during the school day. We looked for teachers who would provide a balance of subject area, for teachers who would provide a balance of experience in Guilford, some teachers who may have had experience in previous districts before coming to Guilford, and so, no, we spoke with their principals and tried to select people who would provide a balance. There were a couple of topic-specific conversations. In his first visit, we had Dr. Borland meet with elementary teachers, then middle school teachers, then high schools teachers, and we tried to provide a representative demographic sampling of our folks here in Guilford. There were a couple of topic-specific conversations, one particularly around math, so that was a K through 12 conversation, where we looked to draw people who were involved with mathematics district-wide, or math representatives from different grade levels. So we had a math teacher from Adams, we had the department chair from the math department here at the high school, we had an elementary teacher, we had Maria Carreri, we had Dr. Keen, we had a couple principals be part of that. And then we had a conversation that was specific to AP instruction, and we identified teachers who commonly teach AP courses here at the high school. To teach an AP class, you need to have specific professional development, you need to be trained in providing the AP, so we only invited teachers who have been teaching AP classes for some time. The only open invitation went out to parents, to the community.
Okay, and then so once that report is prepared, and at least at the latest when it's presented to the board, then it's a public document, and we will make it available to anybody who wants it.
Yep, and remember, part of Dr. Borland's contract is to come and present that contract to you, so we will be looking at most likely a meeting in January or very early February to have Dr. Borland join us at a Board of Education meeting. You'll have the report in hand, and he will be there to overview it, explain it, and take questions on the report.
Okay, great. Anybody, anybody have any comments or questions about that? Okay. Well, unless there's something else, should we maybe go back to the agenda?
What a novel idea.
After all, what's an agenda for, if not to...
Sort of a buffet.
Well, you know, you got to try to... All right, for, item three on the agenda is action on the minutes of November 3, 2014, which is, that's the expulsion hearing, I believe. On November 10, well, let's just vote on that first. Somebody who was at that hearing moved to approve that?
Moved to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, that carries four nothing. I think that's the number that we're at, right? I believe. Okay, 3.2 is November 10, 2014, regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved. Second.
Any changes, corrections?
Just one correction on the financial discussion, I recuse myself.
Right, on the vote on the bills, yeah.
Right.
Anything else? Any other corrections? Okay, all in favor with that correction?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then November 24, 2014 workshop meeting, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
Any changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item four on the agenda, Mr. Sands, you reviewed the expenditures for the month?
I did. The expenditures for the month in November were $4,285,042.61. The warrants were $1,973,941.50. The expenditures and encumbrances through the end of November are 35.77% of the budget as compared to 33.27% at this point last year. So we're a little ahead of where we were last year. The primary cause for this variance is in the tuition line, where we have some unbudgeted outplacements, which are causing some overruns. And in the transportation area, which is a function of the special ed busing, and once again, this relates to some of the outplacements that were not, that were not taken into account when we did the budget. Then we reviewed in the Operations Committee in significant detail the, all of the expenditures for the month, and I don't think there were any particular unusual items there, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any, I know we did go through that in some detail in the Operations Committee meeting. Is there any other comment that anybody had, or questions? And that's a motion to approve the expenditures?
So moved. Second.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I recuse myself.
All right. Item five, public forum for topics on the board agenda, anybody? I think I've given everybody the opportunity already, but feel free. Communications, I know we had, we've all had many communications about the start times. Has anybody had a negative email about start times? I haven't, I don't know.
I haven't had a negative email. As one can imagine, there's also some...
How's it going to work?
Face, no, Facebook conversation going on, and, and I did see one comment from someone who thought it was a bad idea because of kids who work after school and impacting start times for work. It is among the comments, the only one against that I heard.
Okay, yeah, that's something that we talked about, I think, that's last time that we looked at this issue, and it's certainly something to continue to take into account.
But otherwise, all I've heard has been in support of us making a decision.
I did have a conversation at a sporting event where someone expressed that, you know, they got up at 7:00 AM and work bond for them, and it's going to mess up the sports. And I think probably some of that sentiment is more prevalent than people are willing to communicate to the board about, so I think maybe outreach...
I am quite optimistic that whatever we do is not going to have 100% support.
Yeah, no, I know, just as far as communications, and I think considering...
There are also people who used abacuses.
I mean, there are...
Slide rules.
No, 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 listen, they are very legitimate issues. I mean, Mr. Jarvis brought up some very legitimate issues, Mr. Masenti did, I've heard some of the same things you have. Wilton, I think, has had a higher degree of cooperation with some of their neighboring towns than, than maybe we might expect, given that they are more geographically compact. And so we would be able to start, even with a later start time, they might be able to get to a New Canaan or a Stanford much quicker than we could get to some of the towns in our league, but we'll have to work that out and present the alternatives.
I mean, it would be very interesting to hear from people that, that's a fine line between sort of when you do it, as far as how much conversation there's been, and how much education there's been before you put a survey out there and really get the public opinion, but I think there ought to be an opportunity for everyone to weigh in.
You know, Ms. Bries' comment was interesting because one of the comments I heard was, there was a woman who said everyone on her street drives their kids to the high school because the bus shows up before 6:00 AM, and there just, no one on that street rides the bus because it gets there so early.
Yeah, now, that cuts both ways, though, right? I mean, it's more, it's better from a societal point of view to have more kids on the bus and not being driven either themselves or by their parents. On the other hand, is that, if ridership, you had, you assumed a 50% loading number, and in fact, if the bus ridership goes up, does that lengthen those bus rides for the high school students beyond where they even are?
We're not assuming if it, that's the actual ridership.
The actual ridership is about 50%. We assume sort of 110 or 115% ridership.
All right, so let's say you get actually, let's say you actually get 70%. What does that do to the run times? I don't know, I mean, let's, just something we have to think about.
Are we stopping now at every stop?
For stop.
No, no, it's not like a commuter, it's not like the commuter, but they don't stop at every stop. If you're not out at the, at your stop, it goes right by you. So yes, it could, if everybody started coming out to those stops, slow it down marginally.
And, well, we shouldn't go back to this conversation. We brought it up before, though, and, and maybe it's at every school, but there are large, I mean, that's an hour and a half before school starts. I mean, if your bus shows up at 6:00, and school starts at 7:25, but so many of the buses are arriving here at 5:00 of 7:00, and so kids are sitting here for another half an hour as well. But, anyway, that was another communication that was interesting.
I'm looking forward to the meeting we're going to have.
Yes.
We also got, all of us, I think, got some communications about IB programs.
Yes.
Oh, yes, yeah, a lot of those.
Okay, well, and I think also all favorable, right?
Yes, yes.
All right, well, student representatives, we've already done that. 8.1, dining services, we've done that. Update on the 2015-16 budget, what would you like to tell us about that?
Just to let you know that we continue to meet at this point, we have had our initial meetings with all principals and area directors. We took our first run as a central office and business team this morning, now that we've got all of those, those components in, going through and taking our first pass at it. With the information that you heard from Mr. Spurgeon today, we have another big component in, in the insurance number, the medical benefit number. We're waiting to try to finalize some projections on utility, projections for the new high school. We're working with Kohler Ronin, they are the engineer, it's been subcontracted by the architect. That should give us the best budgetary figures, and we should be coming to a complete first draft with a complete first draft bottom line, hopefully by the end of this week, the beginning of next week. We have our first meeting with the Board of Finance for next week. I don't think that we will have a number to present to them, but obviously, the components that we will want to discuss in this budget will be the enrollment projection that you've all received tonight. I don't expect that you'll have a chance to have an in-depth conversation tonight, but we'll be able to overview that for the Board of Finance and touch base on some of the topics we've been discussing, international baccalaureate programming, possible school start times, and insurance impact. Again, I'll say this year, while we're having really interesting conversations, we're not having programmatic conversations that will be of an impact like full-day kindergarten or the special educational redesign that we embraced a couple of years ago. High achieving students, IB, school start times, I think those will be the items that we'll be overviewing for the Board of Finance and roughing out what impact those could have on a budget. It won't be till our next meeting with them, after you formally received a number, that will have any figures to present to the Board of Finance.
Okay.
Next, December 15th, right?
Yes, that's December 15th.
Monday before their regular meeting. So it's 6:30, I believe, at the community center.
In the community center.
Do you mind commenting on the exit survey? I think there was a communication about that. I became aware that that went out. That's the first time we've done that, is that...
Yeah, we've had conversation, we've had a number of conversations at this table about the idea of me conducting exit interviews with families who withdrew last year and trying to identify the reasons for those withdrawals. Essentially, what we did is we sent out an invitation to engage with me in those exit surveys, and we connected three or four questions prior to asking, would you be willing to come in and sit with Paul to have a discussion about this? So we sent that out to approximately 48 families. They were families of students who were enrolled for all of last year but withdrew before the beginning of this September. So they were here for all of our first year of implementation of Common Core state standards, but will not be here with us this September. So we had asked those folks to come in and be, would they be willing to sit in a small group or individual exit interview with me, discuss that decision, and whether their answer to that is yes or no? We also asked some quick demographic information to get a sense of who this target group is. I haven't brought it forward, but it is part of the enrollment study. There is time spent on students who attend private or non-public schools here in Guilford, so I'd encourage all of you to take a look at that, that section as well. It speaks to some of the same questions.
That's at page 2-18 specifically, and...
Broken down by level?
Right, and it's, and it's actually remained relatively flat. The non-public school enrollment was 16.8% in 2005 and 15.6% in 2013, and it goes up a couple of points or down a couple of points in any one year, but it's hard to see, at least from that data, any, now, some of that's VOTAC or, you know, but anyway, the data's all there.
And he's got pros descriptions about each level, but when you take a quick look at the data, it appears that we're remaining relatively stable for the number of students who withdraw in any given year, or the number of students who avail themselves of educational opportunities other than our Guilford public schools.
The one outlier there is actually high school, and they comment that there may be an effect of the new high school in terms of bringing some students back into the district.
Yeah, actually, the demographer suggested something that I think is really interesting. I think we might want to seriously consider availing ourselves of. He's really interested on the effects of a brand-new high school and full-day kindergarten on in-migration. So while those two events shouldn't affect our birth rates, it might affect who chooses to come to town, and so the study actually includes middle, high, and low projections, and he is really interested in coming back when we've got three more years of data and revising this, taking a look at whether or not those two new elements affect... taking a look at whether or not those two new elements affected our in-migration or our retention of students just like these exactly.
That's probably worth doing.
Sure. Definitely.
He's so interested in it, and I almost got the impression he'd be willing to do it free of charge.
Let's tie that down.
Let's remember that.
That was not an offer, but it was a sense.
I'm trying to research.
That's exactly right.
I mean, his predictions are remarkably accurate.
They were.
Yes.
And the methodology that they use is really.
There's some fascinating information in this report. And right, he was, I think his, I think his projections from 10 years ago held to within a percent of accuracy. Yes.
And as compared to the state data that we relied on for many, many years before that, which was off by, what, 10 or 15 percent, as I recall, it was just not close. This, no, this was a very good decision.
Birth rates, housing starts, unemployment rate, housing prices, and how they've held in our community compared to others. Now, there's some really interesting information that goes into his projections.
I think we should probably put this on the agenda in January to talk about, don't you?
Oh, yes.
To give everybody a chance to read it.
Yes.
That is great. And this is, this is something that I think everybody will probably pick something else to say that this is important, but I think, I think it's really interesting information.
There's a nine-page summary followed by the really lengthy full report, but it's really interesting information.
All right. Let's, let's put that on our January agenda to talk about in a little more detail.
Great. And I kind of feel like we just knocked off 9.3.
Get jumping on.
We did.
Paul, can you send this out electronically as well to us?
Yes, I'm happy to do that.
And so we've done, have we done everything under item eight? Superintendent's report?
Yes.
Okay. And we've done, we haven't done 9.1.
No.
Which is the personnel. Oh, hang on, excuse me. My apologies, Mr. Graziano. 9.1 is to ratify the resignation of Regina Santanello, library media specialist at Jones effective December 24th. Is there a motion to ratify that resignation?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I take it there's a plan to address that, whatever the situation is there, or?
We are working on it as expeditiously as we can, yes.
Okay. 9.2 is to just receive annual reports for the last three years. This is, I believe, a, either municipal requirement or a hybrid municipal-state requirement, and you have them. If people want to talk about them, that's great. We can put it on the agenda for next month, or if people have questions, I don't think it should surprise anybody on this board.
We've been presenting the annual state of the schools report and failed to present these formally under this title to all of you, so they're here this year to correct that oversight. It's essentially the information that you've received annually in the state of the schools report.
Makes sense.
Okay. 9.3, we've done, I think, for now, the enrollment study. We'll put that on the agenda for January and talk about. 9.4, act on a custodial supplies bid for 2014-15. Do you want to present that, Ms. Renner?
Sure. We discussed this in the Operations Subcommittee meeting. We buy approximately 82 or exactly 82 items for use by the maintenance staff, supply items. And as we've done for several years, we seek bids, but we don't ask the vendors to bid on the whole package of 82 items. They bid individually. We found that we achieved significant savings by doing this. And this year, there were 16 bidders that submitted bids for some or all of the items. What we propose doing is authorizing the staff to accept the low bid on each item. So rather than going through all 82 items now by name and awarding them, we'll just authorize that action. So I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and do that.
Okay. Yeah, that, the sort of motion is that the administration be empowered to accept the low bid on 82, each of the 82 bid items for custodial supply. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. We actually, Ms. Renner asked a good question at the Operations Committee. There are some people that won't bid on it, item by item, some suppliers, because they want the whole package or a larger package, and do we save money by doing it this way? And I think the information you got.
Was that we do save.
Right.
We believe we do better this way.
Okay. 9.5 is to receive for a, this is just a receive tonight, right?
Well, it is a receive item, but depending on what the board chooses, it's, in fact, Mr. Bloss.
You can waive the timeline.
You may jump up and down in excitement.
I'm trying to keep you out of FOI trouble, okay?
The policy, so, right, so this is certainly a receive action, and again, possible, possible action. We have, the Policy Committee is suggesting that, under bylaws 9430, in the Order of Business on the Agendas, that we remove number 10, unfinished business.
Which is the next item on our agenda.
That would be correct. There may be, may be an impetus.
Maybe not next month.
Maybe not.
But, right, perhaps not next month. It is truly the only, the only change that the Policy Committee is suggesting to the whole.
So are you, are you moving that we waive the, our policy that requires both submission and then postponement for a month and then proceed to adopt this?
I, I, I am making such a motion, thinking that this is something that probably we could decide quickly and without more time.
We've discussed it enough, I think.
Well, yeah, I mean, and Mr. Kazin is, you know, it's good to have, it's always good to have lawyers.
Yes.
For certain things.
Yes. But he actually has, I think, brought our attention to multiple things, issues that we need to make, be very, very thoughtful about and very careful about under Freedom Information. And one of the things is that you cannot put on an agenda something, you cannot add to an agenda absent a formal vote by two-thirds of the people present, an agenda item. And so when you have something that doesn't identify the topic to be discussed, like unfinished business, it just doesn't comply with FOI. So that's why we're very careful about trying not to actually talk about substantive issues under that agenda item. If we want to add an agenda item, we just add it. That's fine. But you have to do it in the way that the statute requires, as Mr. Kazin is very fond of reminding, reminding us. So that's the genesis of it, and I think it's certainly a reasonable, given that I don't think we have actually talked about anything substantive under unfinished business in years, if, if ever.
But let's make sure nobody thinks we do.
No, that's right.
And take that right on.
Good idea. All right. Any other, anybody concerned about proceeding this way? All right. All in favor of a motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And let me remind everybody, by the way, if you want something on the agenda, just email me a few days ahead of time. And usually, the process is that Dr. Freeman and I talk about it by the Monday and the Tuesday the week before, usually finalize it by the Wednesday or so, and it gets out to everybody on Thursday for posting. So if anybody wants to add something, just, just let me know. Now, given our vote on 9.5, I'm going to assume that there is nothing under item 10, unfinished business.
You voted to waive the policy.
Oh, did we?
But you did not vote on the policy recommendation yet.
I thought that was, I thought we did.
You got it combined?
I think that's what.
I heard it as a combined.
Yeah, I think so.
So we waived the policy and voted on the recommendation?
Correct.
Same call, okay?
Right. Okay. Item 10, unfinished business, there, I'm sure is none. Item 11, 0.1, Policy Committee, is there anything else you're all working on?
No, this is not, you know, we're, we are in the process of identifying and prioritizing what's next. Mr. Bowden, at our last meeting, provided guidance on topics that he has been keeping aware of in terms of what's coming, had, came out of the legislative session in the spring and things that we need to pay attention to, so that our next step is to really to jump into some of those particular issues.
Okay. I should note, by the way, that the three, our three delegates, representatives to the General Assembly will be here, or have been invited to be here anyway, next month, as is traditional. The January meeting, Representative Candelaure from North Guilford, or whoever, not from North Guilford, but he represents North Guilford, Senator Kennedy and Representative, or Senator-elect Kennedy and Representative-elect Scanlon have been invited, so hopefully they can be here. So if people have comments like, and it wouldn't shock me that somebody will suggest to them that as long as they're doing educational stuff, maybe do something about start times, huh? Like.
I have already sent letters to all of those representatives and other elected or re-elected officials and offering to sit and chat with any of them about any possible topics coming up on the agenda, and Mr. Scanlon has already taken me up on that offer. I'm hoping the others will as well. They tend to. So I look forward to those conversations as well.
Okay. Operations Committee, you should talk about the insurance presentation.
Yes, we had an update from Joe Spurgeon from Millenium, our benefits consultant. And as, as we learned a month ago or two months ago when he came last, we continue to do well in terms of our non-high-dollar claims. We have mostly non-high-dollar claims, and the number is, I believe, has actually dropped. But then we have a handful of high-dollar claims, and that's where all of our spending is taking place. We're learning that it was a very wise idea for us to reduce the limit for the stop loss. What else did he say that was of interest?
Well, we're gonna, no, I think that's, that's it for now. We're just gonna have to keep an eye on it moving forward in negotiations, obviously, and that's something that we've known for years, and so we'll continue to look at that. We did talk a little bit about electricity, that I know that there's been some chatter about what's happening with generation rates and transmission rates, and at least we're okay for this year, and we're gonna have to keep an eye on it for next budget year. And given that the town has locked into a contract for the generation, that we're actually in much better shape than some people on that particular issue. But do we, and do we know how long that contract is for?
We're gonna check that, right?
Yeah, I.
We'll try to get that out.
Yeah, we'll find out tomorrow.
Okay. We'll talk about that. Anything else that you can think of? Okay. All right. Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee had a meeting. Dr. Moore, do you want to just summarize what happened at that?
Sure. The first meeting?
Yeah.
Yes.
We've only met once, right?
CIA Committee. So I guess, just briefly, we revisited the purpose of the committee and talked about the naming. I think initially, it was the Curriculum Committee, but we decided that it was a little bit broader than that in terms of the scope. After that, I believe we talked mostly about the math curriculum. We had Jessica Geller join us as well as Maria Carrari, and we outran our time in discussing some of the issues. I don't think we reached any conclusions, but from my perspective, it was a lot, very helpful in terms of illuminating all of the board members that were there. And I think everyone was there. I know Mr. Sands made it a little bit late, but I think it was sort of a committee at the whole, and I thought it was helpful to have that opportunity to really talk about education issues. So I'm looking forward, I think the next meeting is in January, is that right? Because we don't have.
Right. Yeah, and I think we should talk about whether we want to continue that discussion or whether we want to continue it for a little while and then open up something else. It's something I think if people have ideas, just let me know, and we can try to put that together.
We're shaping that agenda before we?
Yeah.
We may have Dr. Borland's information by that meeting, too.
Yeah. 11.4 is High School Building Committee. I actually went to the last committee meeting. It was, the bottom line is still planning on-time openings, still planning an under-budget opening. So they're, they're, it's really, I just talked to somebody who went on a tour, Mr. Messeny, in between conducting orchestras and trying to run a high school, is doing a fair number of tours of the new building.